Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Stephanie LeWares from Christ Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Mojave Mortgage, Dawn and Chad Hansen.
Good evening. Let's pray together. Father God, as we come together this evening, not only as a community and the decision-makers, but we come together as one group to share our thoughts, our feelings, and uphold this great city that we live in, I just ask that you're with us, that we can speak clearly, be heard, and have our hearts and minds known, and that the decisions made here reflect the best interest of everyone involved. Be with our leaders, be with our first responders, our military, and those that keep us safe each and every day. We pray these things in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then Chad, if you want to tell the citizens what it is you're doing here, you're here to make a contribution, donation to our K-9 program and how those monies were raised?
I am. Thank you. For those that don't know me, my name is Chad Hansen. I'm the founder and CEO of Mojave Mortgage, and we run a stock car out at the local Havasu 95 Speedway. And what we pledged to do is anything that we won throughout the year, we tried to find a good organization to donate it to. So I actually called Captain Whitaker, who's here, and asked him who we could give it to within the police or the police department, if you will. And he thought that the K-9 unit would be a good thing. So we actually gathered a bunch of different companies to come and get involved with us on this. And we have Terry Sponder from Sponder and Associates in Bullhead City, who I do a radio show with up there once a month. I have Bobby and Julie Lewis from the Lewis team with RE/MAX by the Lake. They're here with us. And we have Radio Central being represented by Mr. Paul Lavoy, Steve Greeley, and Mojave Mortgage, and Bradley Chevrolet, and of course Mojave Mortgage Racing, which is me. So all in all, we collected $3,150 to donate to the police K-9 unit. And then I just found out that K-N-T-R actually kicked in another $262, and that was a surprise. So at this time, I'd like to present a multitude of checks, almost $3,500, to the Fraternal Order of Police. And I don't know who wants to accept it, but here it is.
Yeah. So if the council wants to join me, we'll go in front and we'll all accept it together. All right. Thank you again for that contribution to our K-9 program. Next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our Call to the Public. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments would be limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. Again, we ask that you address the council directly on any of the items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. You do not have to sign up to speak at Call to the Public, and today we do not have any citizens sign up. So if anyone would like to address city council during Call to the Public, please make your way to the podium and just state your name for the record.
I'm James Maniachi. I live in Mountain View Estates. And in today's daily news, as the regular annual quarter of a page, "Truth in Taxation Hearing Notice of Tax Increase Advertisement." And I remember when Arizona put this into effect, and I was very glad to see it, because quite often in discussions, you focus only on one part of the tax program. This concentrates on how much additional money you're going to be raising from your property taxes, and it's almost a quarter of a million dollars. And it says that the proposed tax increase will cause Lake Havasu City's primary property taxes on a $100,000 home to be $67.18. Without the increase, that would be $64.33. And of course, for Lake Havasu, you have to multiply that $100,000 by two to 10 times. And then there's the fine print that says this does not include what would be received from new construction, and it also excludes any changes from property tax levies that the voters approved for bonds, budget overrides, or tax overrides. And then you'll actually have your hearing, of course, the next council meeting on June the 28th at 6:00. Also, I would like to comment about when you get federal grants, the federal government doesn't give anything without taking an arm and a leg back. And so I hope you're fully prepared to absorb in three years the full cost of, for instance, those 11 firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public?
Good evening. How are you doing? I'm Bonnie Toy. I just wanted to say, hey, I got to scoot up here on your sidewalk on Swanson. Just want you to know that it was being used, that I used it. There was actually a bike rider that came up alongside me and let me know that he was on the left of me, because I couldn't see behind me. And he was on an electric bike type of a thing that he was going way faster than me at no speed whatsoever. It's really fun being on the electric scooter, especially seeing these gas prices. And when I was driving up on my electric scooter, I noticed that the micro hospital zoning notice things were up there for today. I thought that was really cool and that there was no building done on there. But I was somewhere else recently that I noticed that had the zoning notice and it wasn't even approved yet, and the whole building seemed to have peered out of nowhere and moved. So I just didn't know if that was regular practice in Havasu. So I just thought I'd ask. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address during Call to the Public?
Good evening, city council, citizens of Lake Havasu. One of my concerns that we need to come to a working understanding of what affordable housing is. We seem to be changing zones to meet the builder who wants to come in, but according to the Housing of Urban Development, which we're urban development, the payment you should be making on rent is 30% of your income. In our working industry here with our restaurant employees, landscapers, employees that work for the city, they can't afford what is being built, and we need to see about making an understanding what affordable housing is. You have somebody that's making $14 to $17 an hour, they cannot afford $15, $18, or $2,600 of rent. They're working two jobs. Some single moms and dads are working one job, got kids, and going to school too. So there's no chance of them working two jobs. And I know that it's affecting the restaurant businesses, because some of them are closing for only half days because they can't find employees to work. They're leaving here in droves, and I think it's the responsibility of this city and this council to address those situations so that infrastructure is not totally destroyed and we don't have any employees for anything. Another issue that I was working on was the water. We're not even worried about conserving water from the looks of it. We have people who are putting lawns in with new construction. I was over at Home Depot the other day, and they bought a trailer load of grass to put down. We know how long that's going to last, between the rabbits and whatnot. But we need to hold off with the waterfalls that are being built. With R3 and over, there's a restriction on it. But homes have got waterfalls and all kinds of stuff going on that is our drinking water, from what I understand. It's a different situation with the water that we use for our golf courses and stuff. But it's up to us as a community to start somehow advertising to slow down on washing your cars out in the driveway, draining your pools out in the middle of the street during the day. That all affects everybody. And I just think it's important that we address that. I can remember when I first got here, Rotary Park, you had to pay to get into. And I'm not sure why that stopped, but it's additional income to help cover the police department, the trash pickup, and all that kind of stuff from the visitors who come in there and destroy it. Not all visitors, but some. And I think that if we could implement that, that would help bring some more income for those departments to either address better equipment for them and go from there. It just... Oh, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Yes, please. Sandy, just make your way to the microphone.
How are you doing? Good, thanks. Good. My name is Sandy Seedorf. We have a family organization that we've done for quite a few years. I think we started with Eileen Nixon and Donna McCoy and myself, and we decided that Havasu needed a rally, not a one-day affair on motorcycles. So we got a committee together at one of Eileen's homes, and we brought in, she told me to bring her a committee to do a motorcycle rally, and I did. And then she said, well, we need somebody to run it. And I went, okay, so I'm the only one with motorcycle experience, so I'll volunteer for that one. What else you want me to do? Well, we need vendors. Just give me a list, I'll get it done. We didn't make any money. However, I saw Vietnam vets cry and tell me they shot Jane Fonda in the eye with the Lick'em Stick and thing. I had put a bucket next to her picture. It was only a poster size. Got more money in that bucket from Vietnam vets shooting Jane Fonda. A lot of us have not forgotten that she was a terrorist, okay? That's the way we feel about her. So back to the family benefit. I retired way too early from the United States Postal Service. That's where I'll tell you where the good old boys are, okay? You're not one, Cal, okay? What happened is I started because I felt bad for veterans. I felt bad for the way they were treated within the postal service, and it was up to the employee, if we wanted to put it in our jacket, that we wanted a hardship transfer because we had been involved in a postal situation. I chose not to put it in my jacket. I wasn't going to get a promotion because I had to play cops and robbers in Huntington Beach and direct every manager to start delivering. Nobody was coming to work, and I didn't blame them. There was a gunman out there for three days. Maybe some of you remember, maybe you don't. Lot of why California moved here. I happen to grow up in a nice area. My parents helped build Anaheim. My dad was on Chamber of Commerce. I didn't get raised by a bunch of sisters. I got raised by brothers and a dad. He took me everywhere, and that's what's missing. And the only smart thing that Hillary ever said was, "It takes a village to raise a child." And we've been trying to do that with the veterans, help the veterans. I'm out of time. We're going to change it up like your baby floor. Babies is coming alive.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council during Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any of the council members would like to take off for separate discussion? There is one item that we have a citizen that has signed up to speak on item 6.3, so if there is a motion that we're going to entertain, if we could set 6.3 aside for separate discussion.
I'll move to remove 6.3 for discussion.
All right, we have a motion removing 6.3. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Campbell. All those in favor, please vote. Sorry, I had an NPO meeting earlier, and we do it a little differently. So the screen will have it on.
Do I need a motion?
Councilmember Campbell, your vote?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Second, I thought it was Dawn.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. And now item 6.3 is the approval of the final subdivision plat for Akatio Ridge. Excuse me.
Mayor, if I can, Clerk Williams and so forth, so that the motion was to remove item 6.3 from the consent agenda, perhaps a motion to approve the consent agenda would also be required here.
Okay.
Pull them in my motion. To approve 6.3 and to remove 6.3 and approve the consent agenda minus 6.3.
Okay. So do you have...
I'll second.
I'll second that.
So Cameron, or Councilmember Moses, if you could, yes. Okay. Is that clear? Okay, now we'll vote on approving the consent agenda with the exception of 6.3.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, so item 6.3 is the approval of the final subdivision plat for Akatio Ridge at 2020 Swanson Avenue, tract 2268, block nine, lot 10, creating a seven-unit residential townhouse subdivision in the residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street District. Mr. Morris.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you. As you mentioned, this is a subject request is to create a seven-unit townhouse subdivision condominium project, 2020 Swanson Avenue, just under a half an acre in size, seven units, comes to about 16 units per acre. It'll be a condominium project, so it'll have common area. It also has a common recreation area. It'll have units with attached garages. Again, seven units, about 16 units per acre. That concludes today's presentation. Open any questions you may have? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any initial questions of Mr. Morris? All right, this is a public hearing. We do have one resident, Ms. Peggy Pollock. If you would, please make your way to the microphone.
My name is Peggy Pollock. I live at 54 South Eldorado Avenue. I would like to address what you said at the mayor's meeting last week about city density. Historically, city density comes from the city itself. The person that owned the hardware store, built apartment above it, that's where your city density comes from. It doesn't come from jamming a bunch of people in off McCulloch Avenue. We've already lost the way to have real city density because there are no apartments above the buildings on McCulloch. I think that the city is making a huge mistake trying to squeeze all those people in. A $500, $500 square foot condominium? I can't even fancy them living in a 500-square-foot condominium, and I live in a tiny little house. I think that the city is at a point where they need to step back, stop changing zoning laws, and just let everything settle. The housing market will self-correct, just like all markets do eventually, but let's stop building all those things. You called those tiny houses, and I couldn't figure out what you were talking about. They're not really tiny houses, people. They're really cheap, tiny duplexes. That's my take on what they are, two buildings. And the townhouses that are going up there also, those are the ugliest things I've ever seen. I think that you guys are Californicating our beautiful city, and we're losing what we have. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so what was in front of us here is just a final subdivision plat, which is not, we're not changing the zoning. This zoning has always been in place. The zoning for, as you described, Peggy, of having homes on top of a barber shop or whatnot, that's allowed in the commercial district. Some of the conversation we've been having with density, the zoning's already been there. It's just ensuring that the zoning and the general plan intentions were met, but that was actually, we took it at a previous meeting. Please, if you can just get to the microphone, so those at home can.
I remember when we had coffee with the mayor, I think probably last January, and you said the way the city bill is laid out, that 90,000 lots would be all that it would, all the city could have because of the way the building is. Is that, do I remember correctly?
Yeah, it's not about lots, it's about population. So population about between 95,000 and 100,000.
When you're changing all of these things and putting all these people downtown, is that included in the 90,000 or is this above?
I mean... It's included in the number, because the zoning has a change. It's always been the same.
It's always been the same.
Yes.
Okay. Affordable housing is not going to solve itself. However, we still have places, Topac, Golden Valley, there are places that people can live relatively cheaply, but they have to commute. We're not suffering any different than all the resort areas in Colorado and Sun Valley. They've all gone through everything we're doing, but eventually things will correct themselves. But let's put up real houses. If you want to see a tiny house, look at Cadet on Cadet and McCulloch, that little brick house on the end of the cul-de-sac. That, to me, is a tiny house. My opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? If you just get to the microphone and state your name.
In regards to, ma'am?
Oh, Sandy, you have to address the council, though.
I'm sorry. I just wanted, with all due respect, I just came back from the beach area where I was raised in California. I have a niece and a nephew that make such good tips in the harbors. That description of a tiny house is large compared to what those kids are paying, almost $2,000 a month. They don't want dogs, they don't want kids, they just want to make money. And that's a good place to make it. But again, your tips is what covers your bill. When you take out a fishing boat out of the harbor in Newport, you're not messing around with a little dinghy coming down the river. You're dealing with a higher echelon, okay? That's just my comment in regards to that. This is bold. She goes by B-O-W-S.
Yeah, so we have to stay focused on this agenda item at 6.3.
Oh, you still have to work them.
Yeah, so this item 6.3, so if it's in relation to 6.3?
No.
No, okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for possible discussion or motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the final subdivision plat for Akatio Ridge at 2020 Swanson Avenue, tract 2268, block nine, lot 10, creating a seven-unit residential townhouse subdivision in the residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street, R-U-M-S District.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, our next item is item seven, and we'll go to 7.1, announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and city council, there are several vacancies, both current and upcoming, on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, three alternate members. Community Resource Coalition, five regular members, two alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, four regular members, and one student member. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members and two alternate members. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office for consideration of these current and vacant positions was Friday, June 3rd, by 5:00 PM. However, applications will continue to be accepted for any future vacancies, so anyone interested can submit an application. They are available at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 7.2 is our City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Lots has happened since the last time we met with some different proclamations and recognition of different events throughout Lake Havasu City. Mayor Sheehy proclaimed May 27th as Vernon Dale Chauver Day in Lake Havasu City in honor of Dale's 100th birthday. Congratulations and happy birthday to Dale. He proclaimed May 30th as Memorial Day in Lake Havasu City, and it's true what the mayor said in his address to everyone, "We do not just remember our fallen heroes on military holidays. We spend countless hours working together with friends, neighbors, and veteran groups to ensure that the sacrifices made by our nation's finest and bravest never go unappreciated and that their memories are never forgotten." I would like to credit Samantha Zazlazdi with River Scene Magazine for that picture. On June 4th, it was proclaimed Cancer Survivor Day, and the proclamation was presented to E.V. Cistrow, a longtime resident of Lake Havasu City and advocate for cancer survivors and families. And finally, on June 7th, as State Farm Day in Lake Havasu City to celebrate its 100th anniversary in honor of four Lake Havasu City agents serving the citizens of Lake Havasu, including Agents Alex Ross, Jean Works, Deborah Miller, and Wayne Edwards. Councilmember Michelle Lynn, you presented a key to the city to Father Chauncey with Our Lady of the Lake Catholic Church in recognition of his 15 years of service with his many contributions to the spiritual growth of Lake Havasu City, including expanding the Catholic School, starting the prison ministry, providing mass to the nursing homes, visiting with the sick, being part of the Share the Light Program, speaking to the ASU Lake Havasu College students, coordinating with Lakeview Community Church, and encouraging many new ministries within the church and throughout the community. Good luck, congratulations to Father Chauncey. And lastly, Happy Flag Day. Councilmembers Nancy Campbell and David Lane, Joint Supervisor Ron Gould, and firefighters Nathan Adler, Rick Kelm, and Nick Hovedahl, as the annual Elks Flag Day celebration took place on last Sunday. And the two little kiddos that are in the photo are Everett and Evander. Mayor and council, that concludes my... Mayor and council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, our public hearings. We'll start with 8.1, a Series Nine Liquor Store Liquor License for Texaco Food Mart, 1571 South Pallaverty Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Felicity Heron has applied for a Series Nine Liquor Store Liquor License for Texaco Food Mart located at 1571 South Pallaverty Boulevard. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Nine Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is also in the attendance tonight to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I move to recommend the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control above a Series Number Nine Liquor License for Texaco Food Mart, 1571 South Pallaverty Boulevard.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.2 is a Series Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Mobile Food Mart at 121 North Lake Havasu Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Felicity Heron has applied for a Series Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Mobile Food Mart located at 121 North Lake Havasu Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Ten Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions, and again, the applicant, I believe, is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments of the applicant or Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now...
James Maniachi again. Given the complexity of a simple city budget like this, I want to thank Michael from the News Herald for the story in Sunday's paper explaining all the details. It was very understandable, and I want to thank him for that.
Thank you. All right, so back on item 8.2, would anyone like to address the council on that item? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Mobile Food Mart, 121 North Lake Havasu Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is a Series Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Maverick at 2660 Sweetwater Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, Lauren K. Merritt has applied for a Series Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Maverick located at 2660 Sweetwater Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Ten Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on item 8.3? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Maverick, 2660 Sweetwater Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is Adopt Resolution Number 22-3584, adopting the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2027. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. We have had a few presentations on the city's capital improvement plan, as well as the budget. And tonight, we are proposing that council adopt the capital improvement plan. Since the May budget session, we have had just a couple of changes. Due to needing to carry forward $75,000 from this current year's budget into next year's budget, we are increasing the CIP by that $75,000 for the taxiway alpha pavement project. And then the mulberry treatment plant, aeration basin repair. It, staff had made a determination that the cost was going to need to increase by $600,000. So due to those cost increases, we were able to go ahead and propose an increase on that CIP project within the plan. So the five-year plan total is $131.1 million. The fiscal year 2223 total is $46.8 million. And for the projects in the five-year plan, for those that are included, they are fully funded. This is just a quick summary by category of the different areas within the CIP. So you can see the totals for the various items. The wastewater projects have the largest amount of, of projects, largest amount in dollars at approximately $11.5 million. And water projects are nearly $9 million. General Government does include the PD Fuel Facility, the courthouse, the police facility and jail rehab, Bridgewater Channel dredging, and the, the funds that are not general funds or city funds for the downtown catalyst of $1 million are included in that amount as well. So that is a, is a look at the total of by project within the CIP. And staff would be happy to answer any questions. Turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Other questions for Ms. Olson from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Just a couple of questions. First, on the downtown catalyst project, I see that we have the $815,000 still. We spent the $185,000. What did, why is that in there?
For the design that's occurring for that project downtown.
Okay, so they're planning on using that $815,000 next year. Do we know what we're using it for?
I don't think there are details. I think they're still in the process, but we wanted to make sure that the allocation was there should a decision be made to do something.
Yeah, that item will come back before council as I believe they're in, it's a multi-phase public outreach approach. So once they have all those pieces together, it'll come back before Parks and Rec Advisory Board, as well as the council for consideration.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, the final design for that project isn't anticipated until the late fall this year. And then, so when that, that takes place, we'll bring a presentation back to council and see what the, what the will of council is at that time.
Okay, thank you. And also, on the fuel city facilities and the Bridgewater Channel dredging, it says TBD. Can you, oh, there's a lot of them that say to be determined. What?
That's just the project number.
Oh, just the number, okay.
The numbers get assigned as they're created.
If they took precedence, or, I mean, we're, I just wanted to know that, okay. And, and we're still planning on moving forward with the fuel, city fuel facility?
Yeah, what this, in this budget, that gives the flexibility for council if we want to adopt it. Staff is still going out and exploring what that looks like, and then they would bring that back as a separate item. But as part of the entire budget plan, we have to have allocations for that so that we have that ability and that flexibility to move forward if that's what financially makes the most sense for our city.
Okay, well, then I'll go ahead and, so we're just going to be approving this, but it'll, every one of these items will be coming in front of us to approve later, correct?
Yes, everything over $50,000.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from any members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Yes, I have just an odd question that I noticed in the thing. Up there said that there was $9 million for, that included the courthouse. And I didn't, I was wondering if that includes the new courthouse, or is that something else different?
Yeah, correct. So on total general government, and maybe, Ms. Olson, if you could flip back to the screen, so it's on the screen for those watching, it's $9.4 million. That includes the PD Police Facility, the court, the new courthouse, a city fuel facility, Bridgewater Channel dredging, downtown catalyst, and then the police facility and jail rehab projects.
Also, I had a weird question about the channel, Bridgewater Channel dredging, which I know was done a few, quite a number of years ago. When they go to dredge it, is the project, where's the material going to end up this time?
Yeah, so that, that hasn't been determined yet, but this would be the south end of the channel dredging. Now, it's become a navigable hazard for folks who might have, those users that are down there regularly may have seen some additional signage that are taking some no-moring spots away to try and make it safer until we can get that dredged. But the staff is still working on where the remnants of the dredging material is going to go.
Okay. I just hate to lose the skate bowl, I mean, the grass bowl again, you know, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to, to council.
Mayor, motion?
I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Campbell?
I'm sorry. One more question, please. On the total water projects, where do we, are we getting those funds? The total wastewater projects, excuse me?
Currently, the funds have sufficient amounts in them for the FY 2223 projects. It's like out in the later years, the fifth year, and then beyond, that, that the funding is a concern. That there may not be sufficient funding for continued projects.
Okay, thank you much.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. I move to Adopt Resolution Number 22-3584, adopting the five-year capital improvement plan for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, and we have a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.5 is Adopt Resolution Number 22-3585, adopting the fiscal year 202223 tentative budget. Ms. Olson?
Thank you. Tonight, staff is bringing you the tentative budget, which will set the cap that is allowed for fiscal year 2223. State law calls for that cap to be established during the tentative budget adoption. When you adopt the final budget, you can adopt a lower amount, but we cannot adopt a higher amount than the cap that is set with the tentative budget adoption. Right now, the cap stands at $225,766,868 for the FY 23 budget. The items in this total can be changed, but they can't be reduced, just as mentioned before. Changes that we have made since the May proposed budget session, $10 million in, of an operating transfer is now included from the general fund to the highway user revenue fund for potential road projects, either one main large project or multiple smaller projects. The fund balance is sufficient for that transfer to occur. There is $3 million that was added to the state shared revenue estimate, revenue line item due to estimates that we received from the state and have been verified by the league. And then we did include carryforwards. Also, that we had not identified earlier in the process, we had a better look at what we anticipated to receive by June 30th, and there were several items that would not be received or projects finished by that deadline. So we did propose carryforward funds in that amount so that those, that allocation could be included in FY 23, and those projects and items completed and received. The property tax rate is remaining the same. However, there is an increase, as we stated before, in the assessed valuation done by the county. So that results in about $248,000 additional revenue. And then the total new construction total is $140,000 for a total increase in revenue, property tax revenue of $388,000 that's been included in this budget. And with that, I'll answer any questions. Turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions of Ms. Olson for members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I just, Jill had one question. With the $10 million that were transferring from the general fund over to the HERF, is that including the ARPA that we kind of earmarked for it, or is that just?
It does not include any ARPA. This is just general fund, fund balance that's available over and above what we need for the budget stabilization reserve.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
I just have one question, and Jess, you might be able to answer that, city manager. I'm looking at, I know that our employees had got raises quite a couple of years back. I know that there's been a lot of expenses with medical and all that raised that we cannot control. But some of these departments, for instance, I'm not just picking on you, but it's like $607,000, and it went up to $818,000 from one year to the next. Can, and not all of them are that way, but some of them are. Can somebody explain to me how there's such a jump for like, I'm just using the city manager for this minute, at this point?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, looking at the, I don't have the budget for the city manager right in front of me, but I know we, we did did a transfer from the non-departmental funds into the city manager budget. We made some changes that made some sense in terms of just getting some controls on, on some funds that wouldn't otherwise be utilized by the other departments. The same was said for the, for the council budget as well, too, identifying the water authority dues and other funds for those departments. I see that Jill's kind of flipping through to see exactly what that was, but I do recall something coming out of the non-departmental fund, Jill, that was just moved into the city manager fund. It didn't, wasn't an increase of funds or additional projects or anything along those, those lines.
If I may, Mr. Knutson, the, what we're looking at in the council communication is, on the very far left column, you'll see the adopted budget or expenditures.
Yeah.
The 562 is what actually was spent in 2022, and then the 818, as you ordered to Councilmember Campbell, is, is the budget expenditure, so.
That's about a 30% increase.
Yeah, there's still an increase, certainly, but it's not as significant as what, what was spent. Through all of our budget hearings, we went through department by department, but, Ms. Olson, do you have any specifics on what?
I just wondered, did we hire some other people, or why did that budget go up so high?
No, it, it went up due to some of the reorganization of the budget line items that we did. So there were many items within what we call the non-departmental division that could apply to the whole city, therefore is a benefit to all the departments, so it resides there. But we took a closer look at that, and there were line items in there that really needed to be moved out to the departments for better manageability and accountability. And so we have moved some of those expenditures around. And an example that got moved to the city manager's office, we moved the entire lobbyist expense. Since they managed that contract, we moved that entire budget over to the city manager budget and out of non-departmental. So this is, part of the increase is due to just the basic 3% COLA that's been included, and any step increases for staff within that. And otherwise, it's just the reorganization and the shifting of, of dollars.
I did notice the non-departmental going down from the 18 million down to 12. And that's all I was just, if I have questions out there, the questions that I'm going to get is, why did the city manager get so much money? And I want to be able to say, give a good excuse, so, all right, thank you so much.
Again, a specific, thank you to Angie, who is our budget guru as far as the details. One of those that came out of the non-departmental budget and into the city manager's budget was the, the expense for the lobbyist. So the, the city is still spending the exact same amount of dollars on our lobbyist each and every year. However, those funds now come out of the, are controlled more on the city manager's side of the budget rather than in the non-departmental. So you'll see a decrease in the non-departmental and an increase in the city manager budget, and that's a reflection there. And there's a few other similar items that, that, that represent that.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification, that that's where it was going. All right, thank you.
Yeah, are there any other questions of Ms. Olson or Mr. Knutson before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for, uh, discussion or possible motion. So just as a, a quick recap, uh, today's, uh, by state statute is our tentative budget adoption. Uh, so we are basically setting the ceiling at this point. Uh, we can, uh, over the next two weeks, uh, look a little bit deeper and if there's anything we want to reduce or, or adjust, we can do that, um, at that time, but we wouldn't be able to increase anything. But, uh, I think staff did a really good job, uh, taking into account, uh, you know, different grants that we're, we're trying to achieve and these carryforwards that we're experiencing because of supply chain issues, um, and projects that we already have, uh, going forward. So, are there any other comments here, or Councilmember Coke?
Motion, if you're ready.
Yeah, please.
I move to adopt resolution number two-two dash three-five-eight-five, adopting the fiscal year twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three tentative budget.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Olson. All right, item eight point six is adopt ordinance number two-two dash one-two-nine-zero, approving a planned development rezone major amendment to the previously approved planned development for twenty-one-ten, twenty-one-sixty, twenty-one-seventy, twenty-one-eighty, and twenty-one-ninety Swanson Avenue, tract two-two-six-eight, block two, lots one through eleven, and the mixed-use Uptown McCulloch Main Street District Plan Development, replacing assisted living units, memory care units, restaurant, healthcare, and medical office uses for lots two through five with multiple family residential uses. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you very much. The subject properties are a measure about one and a half acres in size. They're located on Swanson Avenue near University Way, just west of Akoma Boulevard. They're part of an overall planned development and consists of lots two through five shown here outlined in red. The lots are currently vacant. Arizona State University lies to the south and the east of the property, and the views at Lake Havasu Retirement Facility lies to the west. The properties to north across Swanson Avenue are a mix of vacant lots and commercial development. The surrounding properties is owned mixed-use UMS and mixed-use UMS planned development. In twenty sixteen, a planned development was approved by the city council for a project consisting of the following four phases. Phase one was independent senior living units and accessory commercial uses, which has been developed as the views. Uh, phase two is assisted living units and memory care units. Phase three was a restaurant, healthcare, and medical offices, and phase four, retail commercial uses. Uh, of the four phases, phases two, three, and four are still undeveloped. That brings us to today's request. Um, this request is to combine phases two and three and replace them with multiple family residential units. Again, phase one, the views at Lake Havasu Avenue, and then the undeveloped phase four are not part of this PD request amendment. And we'll go a little more detail on what's requested here. The submittal shows this phase consists of sixty-six residential units in four two-story buildings surrounded, uh, excuse me, with a density of about forty-two units per acre. The units are a mix of fifty-four one-bedroom and twelve two-bedroom units. Per the development code, the project requires at least sixty-six covered parking spaces, one for each dwelling unit. The plan shows seventy-eight parking spaces provided. It does not specify which spaces are covered, though. Uh, here's a sample building elevation. Uh, in the mixed-use UMS district, uh, it only allows commercial uses on the ground floor. The proposed development calls for no commercial uses in the buildings. Therefore, the applicant will need an exception to this requirement. No other exceptions are being requested for the application. Uh, the general plan designates this property as high-density residential, which supports this request. Uh, the planning commission recommended approval by a vote of five to one in favor of the request with the following conditions. Number one, the development shall substantially match the proposed development plan provided with the request. Number two, a hundred percent of the gross floor area of the structure may be occupied by residential uses. Condition three, dwelling units may be located on the ground floor. And you, condition four, design review for compliance with the development code and the conditions of this approval shall be required for the project prior to building permit issuance. That concludes staff's presentation. Here to answer any questions, the applicant's also in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a, a presentation they would like to make?
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, Luke Still with Desert Land Group. I've been part of this project since two thousand and sixteen when we did the original rezone. The original idea was to put the views and a lot of the ancillary commercial uses, there's a bistro there and a liquor license and a commercial restaurant, um, some other commercial type of uses, uh, together with assisted living based upon demand. But after we bought it and after COVID happened, you know, the, the, the need for assisted and memory care kind of was apparent that that wasn't going to happen. We looked at some other medical-related uses, which turned out to be a better use at a different location. So now we are selling the property and the, and the buyer is, is wanting to do a higher-density, multifamily-type project that's going to appeal to the campus behind it, but also more to a, an uptown, more dense uh, type of living, which is going to target a cost. I'm not going to call it attainable or affordable or anything else, but his plan is to try and compete based on a, a good quality product at a good cost.
Excellent.
I'm here to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. Are there questions of the applicant or, uh, Mr. Morris? Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, so, and there's, there's no common areas in, for these buildings, are there?
There won't be any common areas of the, inside of the buildings, just on the grounds.
Okay. And then is this, are these going to be sold off?
They will not be sold off. The intent is to just do them as apartments.
Okay, so there, there will be an office part of it, you know what I mean, for, for handling?
Yeah, there will be an office to, to take tenants in and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Can you show me where the entrance is into this? Because I know that there's just the entrance into the University Way. What's, where's the entrance into here?
There, there's two points of ingress and egress, one on the, uh, east side that Luke was pointing to, closer to Akoma and closer to, uh, phase four, which is going to be accessed off of University Way. Um, and then there's one right next to the views entrance as well.
Okay. And you said there's parking spots for each apartment to have one parking spot?
Um, there's more than that. There's, I think code requires sixty-six, um, covered parking spaces. We're proposing to do at least sixty-six covered and a total of seventy-eight parking spaces.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned with, with the parking and I don't, if they get an overflow parking, I'd, well, I guess that, uh, college right now has permits so that people aren't using the college students parking there because sometimes it gets an issue looking for parking in there. Um, and then I guess my question is, who, who's your targeted audience? Like, what's the price range for these rentals?
You know, they're, they're smaller floor plans. To get this kind of density, we had to be closer to the six hundred square foot mark for one-bedroom plans and eight to nine hundred square feet for the two-bedroom plans. So given the size of them, I expect them to compete kind of on the lower end of the market for stuff that's been built in two thousand and ten and after. You know, putting, not putting garages to them, just doing regular covered parking, all those things are, are done with the intent of trying to hold our prices down as low as possible and compete based on a cost basis. So we don't have a, a particular number in mind, per se. Um, the same developer has built a few other multifamily projects in town and wants to do more. Um, he's been successful. Excuse me. He's been successful at occupying these at a pretty high rate, and he does that because he, he offers them at a good rental rate compared to, uh, competition.
One last question. Were, was there any discussions or conversations with ASU on this project?
With us, there have been, yes.
With, yeah, no, no, and no issues like they were?
No, matter of fact, a, a lot of the nursing students are occupying some of the other units that the same gentleman owns right now. And so they're, they're excited to have more opportunities.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? You could just state your name for the record.
I'm Robert Bennett. I own the property directly across from this property. And I want to give you guys a little background on some of this stuff so you understand it. Years ago, when the city decided that they wanted to improve the Uptown District, they created a RUD with the idea that the city was going to supply parking spaces and at a five thousand dollar rate for each and every one of those parking spaces that any developer could buy. Now we have a situation where we are putting in a substantial number of apartments without adequate parking. And I have a problem with that. I bought a lot right across the street that I use for parking. It cost me extra money. I have now a developer wanting to build next to me, put apartments in without adequate parking. The city needs to address the parking problem. And I am not willing to put up with anything less than that. Now, I do not want to make any comments that are super aggressive, but I intend to protect my property rights to the ultimate. This does not have adequate parking. If they want to build those units, they can put parking underneath, just like uh, the L Central or whatever it is.
El Condo.
El Condos down the street did. They can do a lot of things for parking. The city needs to address their original agreement. When we did this RUD years ago in the Uptown District, the agreement was the city was going to buy property and install parking lots. If you don't do that, you're in violation of that agreement and you're diminishing my property values because I already have a problem with people on Swanson parking on my vacant lot or on my parking lot without authorization. I've had to tow it, just ten cars out of that place. People just park in there. It isn't right. Now, I have no problem with the apartments. I think that's fine, but they have to do something on the parking. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, uh, Mr. Morris, would you have any information on, on this parking situation that Mr. Bennett's, uh, referring to?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what he's referring to. Um, the R dot, maybe, maybe the RUDOT study from a few years ago. Um, that was a number twelve, ten, twelve years ago, maybe.
Mr. Bennett, you're very specific about five thousand dollars per spot. What?
That was in the writing. I have a copy of the documents. I have all the copies. I went through this before with the city because when they originally did the development, they wanted me to start paying taxes to support McCulloch Boulevard. We set up a group of people and we fought it down. They didn't do that. They were talking about buildings, two or three, four-story garages on the back of privately-owned property along McCulloch Boulevard. They couldn't do that legally because they didn't own the property. You can condemn it, you can build the garages, you can do all that type of stuff. But you don't diminish my property.
So this was just discussion? It wasn't, you didn't pay five thousand dollars per, per lot? That was just discussion that never did occur?
No, I paid thirty thousand dollars for a lot, so I didn't ever have to pay that.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. Okay. Perfect. Anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please, yeah, just make your way to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Diana Goodrich. Um, I actually happen to rent a building from Robert Bennett. Ever since she did the Swanson thing where you took parking away off of Swanson, every single day that I go into work, I have to chase people out of the parking lot that are parking there from the school, the coffee shop, the views, everywhere. I feel like I have to be the police to go in and kick people out just so my patients can have a place to park and stuff. You don't have enough parking across the street. It's nowhere is that going to be enough parking. So you need to do something about it because it's ridiculous. I have to go into work and be a bully and chase people around and put things on their car that they're parking where they shouldn't be parking and stuff and having people towed. I've had to have people towed, too. I've been attacked for making people move. Um, it's not right. I've had to call the police to come protect me from the people because I asked them to leave our parking lot. And that's wrong. They need to have enough parking, so I don't have to continue to do this. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Goodrich, who, who's parking there right now? I mean, so these departments aren't even there. Who, who, who are you chasing out?
Oh, just people that they come, they want to park there because they're going to go to the coffee shop or they're going to drop their dog down the street at the groomer because you took all the parking away off of Swanson.
Okay.
They come and think, oh, well, here's a place to park. No problem. It doesn't matter that there's all kinds of businesses there. They're trying to do business. You know, then we have to also do, you know, be the police and patrol.
Sure.
The police won't come and do anything about it. They always say, well, it's a landlord issue.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Yeah, it's a strange question again, and sorry, and, um, those crazy people at home on Facebook or whatever. Um, I really don't understand real estate or city stuff, and this is all learning experience to me. As the gentleman was standing here discussing the whole proposed development plan, he said that he owns the property and he wants to have the proposed development plan set in place, I guess, for somebody who's potentially buying the land, who will probably develop it that way. Does that mean if the person who buys the land changes their mind, they have to come back and repose, re, put in a new proposal for a development plan? And is that a possibility? And would that happen?
Yeah, no, that's a, a great question. So, yeah, as, what we're doing today is not a, a typical zoning case. This is a, a planned development that's already existing. Uh, so what's currently approved and, and that, uh, these landowners could do is for some medical uses that were described by, uh, Mr. Morris. So, um, with, with parking for, for, you know, long-term care, memory care, uh, some doctors' offices, those types of things. Uh, this is just changing that use to, to the residential, uh, two-story, four buildings, uh, sixty-six units total. So if that, if that was approved tonight by council and somebody purchased the, the, the property and wants to do something different, they would have to go back through, uh, this, the similar public process to be able to, uh, have that considered. But they would not be able to do it by right. They would have to come through and get the entitlements, uh, through a public process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Yes, please. Just, uh, make your way to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sue Hall. I just have a question about the parking piece. Okay, so if you're going to put in sixty-six units and you're going to put in seventy, what was it, how many?
Seventy-eight spots.
Seventy-eight spots. Most people own more than one car. And so it is going to be a parking issue, and then maybe I do think that we need to take a look at that. Um, there's already, like, everybody has talked about the parking issue. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the public hearing? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to, uh, council for questions, uh, more comments. Uh, of, uh, maybe, Mr. Morris, you could, uh, start with, uh, the parking code because this does comply with the code. And then maybe the applicant can address some of the, the parking concerns.
Certainly. Thank you for the question. Uh, yes, the zoning for this district, uh, requires covered parking. It requires one co, covered parking space per dwelling unit. Uh, so in this case, there are sixty-six units. So it's sixty-six covered parking spaces. Uh, the developer is proposing additional parking spaces, uh, seventy-eight parking spaces. So I believe they have twelve two-bedroom units. Uh, so it looks like they're proposing twelve parking spaces for those. Uh, so two for each of those, and then, uh, the, uh, one parking space for each of the other six, uh, whatever, that number of fifty-four spaces, I believe. It does, uh, require all those to be covered parking spaces in the zoning district. It is, the idea is, of course, if someone's going to be a tenant in here, I would presume they would be looking, they'd be aware of what parking, um, opportunities they have and how many spaces there are. Um, I'm presuming the, the applicant is aware of that and want to make something that will work for their potential clients. If this is something that's so close to the university, it seems like that would be a natural user for the properties, too, but I am supposing there. Uh, it does definitely meet the parking requirements of the development code. Uh, so it just, it, it meets the requirement, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you. And then maybe it's the applicant. Do you, have you considered, uh, this, the potential parking issue that may arise from tenants of the development?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, we have, and based on the unit mix that, of existing units that he has right now, he feels this is an adequate parking mix. There are going to be some people that don't even. There are going to be some people that don't even drive. There are going to be people that want to use bikes and walk, and particularly students. And so we feel comfortable with it. When we originally did this P D, there was parking in the street, and that was part of our original plan development. We've made adjustments to add parking back onsite to account for that. So we feel confident with it, but there is a fine line there, and I think our P D is asking for a maximum of 66 units. So if we had to come backwards slightly from that density to get more parking per unit, we would do so in the interest of making sure we have a functional development that works for the folks we're trying to attract.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Campbell?
I do. I just want to let everybody know that I've been listening to you guys about the downtown density issues and the parking issues, and they're already zoned and they're within code right now. So I'm going to be voting yes on this development, but I want to let you know that I do have a meeting with staff, including Mr. Morris and a bunch of city staff, to really dial down on this downtown density and our parking issues that we definitely do have. So I'm listening to all of you guys. I'm going to hopefully work with it, but at this point, these are the codes that are in place right now. It's zoned for this particular situation. So everybody that's working in the P D process, obviously, I don't want to stop them now because as a developer, I know how difficult that can become when you get stopped midway and have to restart all over again. So again, it's the end of this month, I'll be meeting with staff, and I hope we'll have some more conversations in the near future about this because this is a problem.
Yeah, are there any other questions or comments of staff or the applicant from members of the council? All right, so we do have this item in front of us, which is a major amendment to the previously approved plan development. It is coming to us from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a five-to-one recommendation to do that. I'd entertain a motion if...
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Was there any comment from the one vote?
I believe the dissenting vote, I believe it's something to do with the existing signage on the property about that maybe should be removed.
Yeah, there's an existing signage about a microhospital coming soon, and when I watched back the video, that dissenting vote was not happy with that sign being there at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, this does fall within our current zoning, so I would like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 22-1290, approving a plan development rezone major amendment to the previously approved plan development for 2110, 2160, 2170, 2180, and 2190 Swanson Avenue, tract 2268, block two, lots one through 11, in the mixed-use Uptown McCulloch Main Street District Plan Development, MU-U M S/PD, replacing assisted living units, memory care units, restaurant, healthcare, and medical office uses for lots two through five, Phase Three, with multiple family residential uses with the following conditions. One, the development shall substantially match the proposed development plan provided with the request. Two, 100% of the gross floor area in the structures may be occupied by residential uses. Dwelling units may be located on the ground floor, and design review for compliance with the development code and the conditions of this approval shall be required for the project prior to building permit issuance.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? All right, seeing now, we're ready to vote.
He set a record with that.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. Item 8.7 is award bid for the 2022 Water Main Replacement Project to Premier Backhoe, Inc. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I appreciate being able to come before you and talk about this great project. What I am here for is to recommend award for the bid of the 2022 Water Main Replacement Project. This is project number 108018 in our CIP program. Just as a little brief kind of history and an update on this, this project pertains essentially to two streets that we have. The first one here being Lake Havasu Avenue will begin at Kiowa Boulevard and head south down to Coma Boulevard. This will replace a 12-inch main that we have as, I'll touch on here in a minute, some recent experience that we had with that main. It also involves new surfaces, of course, but full removal of existing asphalt from curb to curb and new asphalt. So it's going to look really nice when we're done with this project. And then we also have Bimini Lane, which will be from the intersection of Ahamah to its end. It's actually an eight-inch lane upgrading from a four that we're looking to do there. Just as a reminder, on Lake Havasu Avenue, there was a failure that occurred on April 27th, 2022. This area has had several breaks in it over the last year and a half or so. It's not a good thing when the slime breaks. I'm sure you're aware, the city has over seven boundaries as you climb up, and when you're at the high end or the low end, in this case, we're at the low end of Boundary Two, and this is where the high pressure is. And so when it breaks, it really causes a mess, as you can see here. This project, we have approximately 150 calendar days, which is five months. We anticipate it being completed in February of 2023. I'm trying to be conservative in that due to some materials, which I'll, potential material challenges, which I'll talk about briefly. I anticipate doing a materials notice to proceed so we can get the material order. And then I've been told potentially up to three months for the materials with the 12-inch. We're seeing that a lot in our projects as we're going out and awarding them. The contractors are having a hard time with the suppliers committing to a firm number until they get a contract and until they know. And once the contractor approaches them, sometimes it can move a lot quicker than that. So just as an example, with our recent water well facilities project, when we originally, the council originally awarded that, we were told that the 18-inch transmission line on it was going to be nine months out. We asked for some verification and clarification on that to make sure the contractor again reached out to suppliers and was told, well, I have it in my yard right now, and if you buy it, I can get it to you within a week. So the city said, please do that, and it was purchased, and they called and said, we got to deliver it now, and it showed up. So I mean, that's obviously a half-cup-full type situation there, but I'm hoping that three months will not be what ultimately we'll see on this job. As I shared in my council communication, there were three bidders when we opened bids on May 19, 2022. Premier Backhoe was our low bidder. They came in at $1,861,298.7. Our engineer's estimate was $1,763,509. So they're just about 5% over, which I was really pleased to hear that. The other two contractors was Percol Rock Company, who Percol Rock came in at $2,021,000, and then Desert Services International, $2,100,000. So they were all within a relatively close amount there. As I shared earlier, we'll be placing about one and a half miles of the 12-inch potable main on Lake Havasu Avenue, as well as the full removal of the asphalt and replacement of that, and then the upgrade from the four-inch to the eight-inch, about 1,200 feet on Bimini Lane. There obviously is sufficient budget available in our 2022 Water Main Replacement Project, and I would recommend that the council move forward and award this project and get this thing fixed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Hart? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Sure, I just wanted to make a comment because we have had people, I'm sure other council members have had contact with people after this break went down, and you guys did a really good job of patching it, but it's not the final patch. And that's been a lot of the comments, is why are we leaving the road like that? And the reason for that is because we're getting ready to dig it back up again, so don't spend a whole lot of money just to dig it right back up. So it was patched that way, knowing that this project was coming forward because this project was already on the drawing board, and it was something that city staff was already working on. And unfortunately, the pipe decided it didn't want to wait and burst on them anyway. So the good news is you picked the right pipe that you knew needed to be replaced. So, but no, that was just my comment. That's why we haven't fixed the road yet, is because we're going to be digging it back up anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane, add to that too. That's savings of upwards of about $50,000. If we were to complete, finalize that asphalt right now, that's an expense to the city. We're hoping to get to the finish line with this project and save those funds.
If I might add to that, we also have concern if we get equipment out on it to start doing such as removing the patch, and we're going to potentially break it again. We just don't want to do that.
Yeah, great point. Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I just want to let the taxpayers know that this main has broken quite a few times, and it frustrates us as a supplier that would have to go and fix it and see the taxpayers have to pay for all these patches. I'm extremely excited that this Water Main Project is finally getting repaired properly. And yes, I think that the city did a fabulous job on their cold patch, by the way.
Excellent. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter?
James Maniachi, since I use that stretch of the road quite a bit. What is the plan for the detours during construction?
Yeah, great question. Mr. Hart?
That's a great question. Obviously, it's a road that we cannot close, so we've put into our scope that the contractor obviously submit traffic control plans that will allow for a two-way traffic. It's a wide enough road where we can do that. Fortunately, the water line is to the east side of the road, and we're going to be approximately six feet off of that. So we're going to be keeping the road open. We will have flaggers as needed. It's very important to us that that remain open, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any additional questions, comments, or a motion.
Will we be letting the businesses? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Will we be letting the businesses along that stretch know when their closure time is going to be and what they can expect?
Yes, this obviously will be kind of a high PR-type project where we'll be in constant communication with the business owners. And I know that, having worked with Premier Backhoe in the past, they're really good at doing that, and we'll stay on top of it.
Okay.
Great. Then Councilmember Campbell?
Motion?
Please.
I move to award the bid for the 2022 Water Main Replacement Project to Premier Backhoe, Inc., in the amount of $1,861,298.7.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.8 is approve the purchase of three Ford F-150 pickups for the Water Division with Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Here again this evening to ask for your approval for three brand-new Ford F-150s. They'll be replacing two 2007s, which are, again, way above the point spectrum. We look to replace it 32 points. These two Chevys are at 40 points and 43 points equal. They have both met their original purchase price with repairs and are ready to be auctioned off, and we are adding one for the new field supervisor in the production with water for that. They're $28,659.17 each at a total of 85,977.51, which is a pretty good price these days for trucks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. When I first saw that, yeah, that's $28,000 for a pickup truck, which is brand-new. I was surprised. It's a complete deal. I had to look at it a few times. I was surprised by it, but good work. But that shows the work with those shared contracts that we have throughout the state, so thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council?
I was just going to say on that, if they're auctioning those old ones off, they'll probably be a lot higher than you expect as well.
Yes.
It's a good deal for the taxpayers, is what we're saying.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick, these are replacing three vehicles, correct?
They're replacing two vehicles and adding one for a new position of the field supervisor for production and water.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I remember in the past, we used to do this vehicle replacement, and they would give us the information on the old vehicles. Is there a reason we don't? I was quite adamant at looking at some of those things. We don't do that anymore, like, is that available?
Sure do. I can give you all the information. They're both 2007s. They both have, one has 115,000 miles and the other one has 103,000. We look to replace them at 32 points on a spectrum that we use with repairs, mileage, years, all of that included. And the one is at 40 points currently, the other one is at 43 points, and they have both met their purchase price in repairs as well, or went over by 15,000 on the second one.
Thank you. I would just ask maybe in the future if we could have that information again?
Sure. So you're looking to have the, what, the 32-point plan?
Yeah.
Okay, certainly.
I think we used to have it. They used to include it.
Yeah, it's the same plan, so we just can have Mr. Knutson's office email it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just for future, future vehicles, like, they would put how many mileage, how old they were, and I like to see that.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lane, we can certainly do that, and it details in terms of age and use. And Mr. Young talks about points, that's one aspect to take a look at it, too. He also talks about exceeding the vehicle price and repair costs. To me, that's a number that we need to look real closely at. So if it's costing us more to fix it than it would take to replace it, then that's obviously a trigger as well, too. There are a number of vehicles in the next budget year. We have a lot of aged, old trucks, parks and rec. I think how many, 10 2005 pickup trucks, I think Parks and Rec has, looking at replacing a few of those. So that'll be coming up, and we can provide that information for you. I bet.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium.
Please don't hate me for this question, Bonnie, again. With the gas prices, the way they are, and the administration in Washington, the way it is, I've noticed that many people have to go to electric vehicles of some sort, and this question really hurts. But in the future, in this case, how is that being applied, and will it be applied to Lake Havasu City vehicles at some point in time if they have no choice?
Yeah, great question. So it's not something that is in this item that's before us, but when it comes to our vehicle plan, we'll have to see what makes sense and what looks, what goes for. We don't have a whole lot of infrastructure here for electronic vehicle charging in the city facility or at the public level. So certainly those, I'm sure, will be in conversations that we have in the future, but these are not electronic trucks. It's my understanding there's only a few that provide those types of trucks in the electronic format. So I'm sure we'll have that conversation one day, but the conversation today is that we'll be looking at a fuel facility that can help lower and sustain our fuel costs going forward. But would anyone else like to address the City Council on this matter? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, I move to approve the purchase of three Ford F-150 pickup trucks with the Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, in the amount of $85,977.51, utilizing the city's cooperative purchase agreement, 2464.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.9 is approve change order number two to the construction contract for McCulloch Boulevard Pavement Rehab Project with Combs Construction, Inc. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I appreciate you coming before you. I, first of all, want to apologize for having to come to you a second time dealing with the McCulloch Boulevard paving project in terms of change orders. In my initial approach, I thought I had everything covered and had everything where it needed to be, and the contractor reached out afterwards and said, there's a few other things that we need to address here that weren't captured. And at that point, knowing that I wanted to come back before you like I want to go to the dentist and get a root canal, I began to negotiate quite seriously with them over a long period of time with their superintendent, and it ended up going to the level of the Combs president, coming and meeting with myself and my supervisor and pointing out some of the things that were not captured. Coming and meeting with myself and, uh, my supervisor and pointing out, uh, the, some of the things that were not captured. Um, obviously, when, uh, this relates to the water main break on the Mulberry, uh, road. Uh, that evening, I believe it was a Thursday at around six PM. Got a, a call that, uh, the water had broke there and we went out, made a verbal agreement. And, um, there, that, uh, event caused, uh, the system that Combs had set up in terms of, of paving. To have to be altered and which, uh, drove their cost up and they had to bring crews in that night. Uh, for overtime and, and such, and it bumped their schedule a couple of days. Uh, which the, uh, president was able to, to show that to me and, and, and to, to prove and this. Lake Havasu's policy has always been, you know, if, uh, contractor is, uh, definitely owed, uh, what they are justifiably showing. And, um, so even though this is not fun for me, uh, sometimes doing the right thing is not always the easiest thing, so here I am. Asking that you approve the second change order in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there questions of, of, um, Mr. Hart on this item?
Yeah, well, I mean, just remind us, what was the total cost of the whole project? Uh, the total cost, uh, with this, uh, change order included is eight-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. And originally, what did they come at you with, uh, that this was going to need to be paid? Oh, that this, uh, portion of it, it was originally gonna be fifty-one thousand for additional work and we were able to kind of negotiate. Get back and forth and prove that we had paid a portion of it, but there was still a remainder that needed to be taken care of. Right. I, uh, I appreciate your efforts of negotiating as hard as you did. Thank you.
Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first off, um, I'm, I'm sorry that this is like going to the dentist. The good part is that it's. It makes you feel, at least you know we're paying attention, so it's, it's not like you just get to come up here and. Oh, well, if I ask for it, they'll give it to me. It's like, you have to come with hat in hand sometimes. Um, my personal thoughts on this is the reason this happened is because we have such failing infrastructure. I talk about this all the time with, uh, um, you know, deferred maintenance that we've had over the years and we're, we're trying to catch up on that. Uh, you guys are doing an outstanding job every single year trying to add more money. Moving ten million dollars into the budget for roads. I mean, you're doing all kinds of things to try to fix the problems. But it doesn't always happen the way we want it to happen, so it's just the, the break we talked about a little while ago and now this break here and this broke because. Of our, our bad infrastructure, so they shouldn't have to, uh, to bear the cost of that, in, in my opinion, so. Um, thank you for the work that you're doing and, uh, I'll let your dentist know that we're not that bad.
All right, Doug, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? See, now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or a possible motion?
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yes.
I move to approve change order number two to construction contract for the McCollough Boulevard Pavement Rehab Project. With Coombs Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Coke. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
I humbly thank you, thank you.
Thank, thank you. All right, item nine, uh, current events. Are there any council committee reports? All right, item ten, future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two at five PM is a work session. And then on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two at six PM will be our regular meeting and we'll also do our final budget adoption there. And then on, uh, Tuesday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six PM will be a, a regular meeting and that will be our property tax levy adoption. Uh, item eleven, are there any future discussion items? Uh, item, uh, twelve, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So will.
All right, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you for joining us and, uh, being here. Be kind and we'll see you next time. We are adjourned.